Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, February 26, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter Sarah Pelk. The following is a list of legislation to be up for discussion by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 22. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes at Chapter 241 Amusement Tax Section 241.01. Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 57. Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds Chapter 237. The City of Pittsburgh's Parks Trust Fund to Conform with the Home Rule Charter Article IX in Order to Establish the Creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund. This bill is sponsored by Councilman Anthony Coghill and Councilwoman Deb Gross. Bill Number 66. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Petragallo, Basick, and Rispanti LLP for Legal Services in Connection with Employment Law-Related Training Amount not to Exceed $7,500. Bill Number 68. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Leach, Tishman, Fuscaldo, and Lampel for Legal Services in Connection with an Employment-Related Matter Cost not to Exceed $13,000. We have new papers. Bill Number 120. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures Chapter 161 Contracts in Order to Clarify Definition of Contract Types Correct Conflicting Language Between Commodities and Professional Services and Add Additional Categories for Requests to Waive the Competitive Bidding Requirements to Be In Line with Current Practice and National Standards. Bill Number 121. Ordinance Amending Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures Chapter 161.22. Debarment from Bidding on and Participating in City Contracts in Order to Change the Requirement of an Affidavit to be a Certification which will Simplify the Contracting Process and Reduce Costs to our Suppliers by No Longer Requiring the Document to be Notarized. Bill Number 122. Resolution Repelling Items in Resolutions Approved on Various Dates Which Authorized the Sale of Property in Various Wards in the City of Pittsburgh Due to an Incompletion of Sale. Item A 228 Kramer. Bill Number 126. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,013 in Favor of Duquesne Light Company Attention Carolyn Single for Damage to Their Light Pole Near 1205 Denniston Avenue from a City Emergency Services Recycling Vehicle Pulling it Down on April 30, 2019. Bill Number 127. Resolution Issuing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,300 in Favor of Dane Hager for Damage to His Vehicle from an Intersectional Accident with a City Police Vehicle in Emergency Response at the Intersection of Frankstown Avenue and Washington Boulevard on March 31, 2019. Bill Number 128. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Three Warrants for the Total Sum of $70,000 relating to the Settlement of a Lawsuit Filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 129. Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated as the Crossing Guards Special Events Trust Fund for the Depositive Monies from Crossing Guards Special Events Cost Recovery and Authorizing the Use of Monies Deposited Therein by the Department of Public Safety to Cover Premium Pay Reimbursement for Crossing Guards and Personnel and Administrative Costs related to the aforementioned activities. Public Safety Services, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have deferred paper. We have Bill Number 70. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into Financial and In Kind Sponsorship Agreements for the City's Office of Special Events 2020 Season. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 118. Resolution Granting unto Jeff Yates Care of McKnight Riverwalk LP Their Successors and Assines the Privilege License to Construct Maintain and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a New Ten-Inch Concrete Sidewalk Along South Fourth Street Five Existing Loading Docks as Well as a New ADA Ramp at 317 East Carson Street in the Seventeenth Ward Third Council District. Bill Number 119. Resolution Granting unto PNC Bank Squirrel Hill Their Successors and Assines the Privilege and License to Construct Maintain and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense an ADA Entrance Ramp at 5810 Forbes Avenue in the Fourteenth Ward Fifth Council District. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 2019, 2031. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article I Section 902.03 Zoning Map by Changing from EMI Educational Medical Institution to UI Urban Industrial Property with Frontage on Jane Street, 20th Street, 21st Street, Mary Streets, Edwards Way, and Harkam Way in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System Seventeenth Ward. This bill is sponsored by Councilman Bruce Kraus. Bill Number 2307. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure Under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known as the Joseph Weiss Jr. Federal Courthouse Located at 700 Grant Street in Downtown Second Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 29. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure Under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known as the Bradbury Located at 1130 Rutter Streets in the Central North Side Neighborhood Twenty Second Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 30. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure Under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances That Certain Structure Known as the City-County Building Located at 414 Grant Street in Downtown First Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 31. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure Under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances That Certain Structures Known as the Pennsylvania National Bank Located at 3480 Butler Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood Sixth Ward, City of Pittsburgh. And we have new papers. Bill Number 130. Resolution Amending Resolution XII of 2019 Providing for an Agreement and Contracts with Cascadia Partners to Assist the City in Developing Plans and Studies for the Development of a Data Manual for the Comprehensive Plan and Providing for the Payment not to Exceed That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, February 26, 2020. Our first order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name or neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the beginning of your three minutes. The yellow light indicates you have one minute to summarize and when the red light comes on, your time is up. Would the first speaker please step forward?
My name is Siobhan F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. There's supposed to be five. There's only four here. Four. Come on, Mr. Lavelle. There's supposed to be five when you start this meeting. There's only four. But I want to bring out also that I heard about the mayor in Wilkinsburg who said that because of what the police had done, that's why that man got free. Also, there was a statement against her and I think the District Attorney might have made it some kind of way degrading her in her statement that she made. But I want to bring forward that this is April 8 through 10, 2016, the city paper. There was a group of people, this is in Wilkinsburg, and Rose Bryce says to these two policemen that were sitting there and Representative Doyle was also standing there and she's saying, "We've been calling you. We have important information. Why are you not returning to people's calls?" And then there was an anonymous man that said he gave, the detective gave him a card. He called the detective. He never called back. Now, this is 2020. This was 2016 when I brought it out because I was talking on Wham-O. I mean, not Wham-O, but it was KDKA and the announcer was Crowe and he hung up on me. When he hung up, "Oh, you're talking about the city paper." I said, "Yes." I said, "I didn't see it in the Pittsburgh Gazette." And he hung up on me and said, "That dude." But somebody called behind and said, "Wait a minute. That was a woman you were talking to and she's very dedicated. Do you understand that this mayor was right? She's a hundred percent right. They wouldn't even look into five people that got killed." Then you had Wendy Bell wrote down about the mama, papa, daddies, some kind of stuff she wrote, tearing these people down that got killed. But yet still, when five Jews got killed outside your door, you had draped it in black and had their names. I feel that every person that's a resident of this county or city deserves the same treatment and they did not try to help find the killer. That's why it's four years and now they find, they're taking, and this man is let off. They had information that they wouldn't come to. And I'm telling you that you, City Council, you're just as bad as the police if you don't answer us, if you don't come to the meetings, if you don't come for public comment. Only four years and it says a quorum is five. You know it and you called a meeting without it. And that's why I'm saying, sometimes I think that some of you should be impeached. I'm getting like the whistleblower. That's what I am and I know you don't want me coming because I, whatever I know, I tell because the people die for lack of knowledge. They die. My son died for lack of knowledge. My son was begging for his life.
Thank you.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller. I live in Little Italy, Pittsburgh, and New York City. Com sta gente? Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Concern or anti-concern of Pittsburgh City Council is public comment. There is a pattern. When I do public comment of uncivil action performed or permitted by Pittsburgh City Council that violates my speech right under the U.S. and Pennsylvania Constitutions and Pennsylvania PC statutes that include multiple episodes 2013 to 2020 involving Ms. Kale Smith, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Burgess, and Ms. Gross and also pre and Christmas recently preceded 2010 to 2014 by episodes involving President of Council Darling, then-President of Council Darling Harris, and Mr. William Paduto. Proceeded by the 2020 February 18 disorder debacle supervised by Mr. Burgess that interrupted my public comment. No, all di la permis. There is one episode in 2015 that is most important in this pattern of council PC abuse tolerance. A female citizen used public comment to criticize me with un-evidenced claims, lies, with what some say is profanity, the American English F-word. The presiding officer, Mr. President of Council Kraus, did nothing to stop her, no interruption of her abusive public comment. One uncivil, if not illegal, act defamation, another if profanity is forbidden in city council public comment. Not that she and he, Mr. Kraus, were working together. Oh, no, that would be unthinkable. Not that she was an agent paid by you or us as taxpayers to do exactly what she did. Kraus had interrupted my PCs during this period. This is abuse. Kraus did not interrupt her PC abuse 2015, so this is a double layer of abuse. RLM Claims to Pittsburgh City Council Public Comment, RLM Centered Abuse in These Episodes 2010 to 2020 are evidenced in video, audio, and written public records. What do you think, councilors? In multiple local, state, and federal entities and courts, what do you think they'll do with you? If the Center for Global Studies and the GIS and I are seeking Pennsylvania state and U.S. federal legal representation against the government of the City of Pittsburgh, what do you think that the city solicitor will do? Nothing prevents legal action against this council collectively and nothing prevents me from taking action against these individuals. Regardless, these are impeachable offenses.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee Agenda. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Here.
President, Mr. Kraus.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
President Kale Smith.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson and Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Five members present.
Our first committee for today is Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself. Would a clerk please read the first bill?
Bill 22. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes Amusement Tax. Definitions to Update Language in the City Code.
Can I have a request for a one-week hold?
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill is held. Any opposed? Sorry. Bill is held one week. Bill 57.
Bill 57. Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds. The City of Pittsburgh Park Trust Fund to Conform with the Home Rule Charter Article IX in Order to Establish the Creation of the Pittsburgh Park Trust Fund.
Need a motion?
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held for two weeks. Bill 66.
Bill 66. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Petragallo, Basick, and Rispanti. One Oxford Center for Legal Services in Connection with Employment Law-Related Training in an Amount not to Exceed $7,500.
Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 68.
Bill 68. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Leach, Tishman, Fuscaldo, and Lamp for Legal Services in Connection with an Employment-Related Matter in an Amount not to Exceed $13,000.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill, what's that, 120?
120. Bill 120. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures Chapter 161 Contracts in Order to Clarify Definitions of Contract Types Correct Conflicting Language Between Commodities and Professional Services and Add Additional Categories for Requests to Waive the Competitive Bidding Requirements to Be In Line with Current Practice and National Standards.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
So I've got, I think, a few questions. I was wondering if we were planning on having a briefing over this bill and probably, I'm sorry, I'm not talking to my mic. I have a lot of questions about 120 and 121. Were we planning on having briefings about them?
If members would like that, we can certainly do it. I can also attempt to explain the bills today.
Maybe a briefing would be in order so I don't take up the time. So I'll probably, we only read 120, so how long do you think it would take to schedule the briefing? So we do two weeks?
It shouldn't take that.
Just one weekend?
Both, actually, bills are pretty straightforward, but there's a lot of marking up in the bills, but the bills are actually rather straightforward.
Okay, so if I'll, I'll just motion to hold Bill 120 for one week then.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One week hold?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held for one week. Bill 121.
Bill 121. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures Chapter 161.22. Debarment from Bidding on and Participating in the City's Contracts in Order to Change the Requirement of an Affidavit to be a Certification into Will Simplify the Contracting Process and Reduce Costs to our Suppliers by No Longer Requiring the Document to be Notarized.
Again, so a motion to approve discussion?
Second. I'm sorry, I can't.
You're still bringing down here. See, it's the same thing. I mean, this may also be straightforward, but we've been making a lot of changes to Chapter 161, so I think it would be helpful for staff and for the administration and ourselves to be able to have some conversation about kind of how these changes have added up now over the last year or two because I know that sometimes I'm getting questions that I can't answer because we've been making so many changes. So if, I don't know if other members feel the same, but I would, I think we'd benefit from a briefing.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we can certainly hold for a briefing. This bill literally just strikes out the word "affidavit." It allows for the e-verify process to actually take place. It saves small contractors weeks' money through the process. So again, it's rather straightforward, but I wanted to do a larger briefing. There's also been conversation with the administration because as you already know that there's a lot of changes that actually need made to Section 161.
Right.
It's very outdated and needs brought up to today's standard. And so if there were members who were interested in that section, maybe a committee of our Budget Office, those members interested in that specific section as well as working with the administration because there needs to be additional changes as well.
I agree. Thank you so much because I really, I have been looking at Chapter 161 for probably over a year, not on a daily basis, but I literally have this giant stack of papers in my office about Chapter 161 because again, I'm supportive of some of the initiatives you started about a year or two ago with Councilman Burgess to make our kind of reporting loop complete so that we know if we're succeeding and including smaller businesses, minority businesses, women-owned businesses. But at the same time, there's been a lot of changes about, you know, contracting limits and going digital and so I think it would be helpful to hear about the whole package together. Thank you. So again, motion to hold one week? Is that enough time?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week. Bill 122.
Bill 122. Resolution Repelling Items in Resolutions Approved on Various Dates Which Authorizes the Sale of Property in Various Wards of the City Due to an Incompletion of Sale 228 Kramer.
Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is passed. One, Bill 126.
Bill 126. Resolution Authorizing Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,013 in Favor of Duquesne Light Company for Damage to Their Light Pole near 1205 Denniston Avenue from a City ES Recycling Vehicle Pulling it Down on April 30, 2019.
Motion approved.
Second.
Session? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 127.
Bill 127. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,300 in Favor of Dane Hager for Damage to His Vehicle from an Intersectional Accident with a City Police Vehicle in Emergency Response at the Intersection of Frankstown Avenue and Washington Boulevard on March 31, 2019.
Motion approved.
Second.
Session? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 128.
Bill 128. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Three Warrants for the Total Sum of $70,000 related to the Settlement of a Lawsuit Filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to hold executive session?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held for executive session. Bill 129.
129. Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated as the Crossing Guards Special Events Trust Fund for the Depositive Monies from Crossing Guards Special Events Cost Recovery and Authorizing the Use of Monies Deposited Therein by the Department of Public Safety to Cover Premium Paying Reimbursement for Crossing Guard Personnel and Administrative Costs related to the aforementioned activities.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Before going on, I'd actually like a motion to reconsider Bill 120. Only reason is our Budget Office caught sort of a technical amendment when they were reviewing the bill and all the various copying-pasting, some of the wording got messed up. So when you get the briefing, I want you to get the briefing on the actual correct version of the bill and I forgot to do that.
Motion to recommit.
Second.
Bill 120.
Thank you.
And then, so a motion to amend Bill 120? Is that what we need to do?
Yes.
We need to amend this?
An amendment is in front of members, so I need a second on the amendment.
Wait, then we have to vote on the reconsider.
Oh, we didn't.
Oh, we did. I skipped ahead.
I'm sorry.
Vote on the reconsider, recommit.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recommittal? Any opposed? The bill is recommitted, can be back. Now we need a motion to approve the bill.
Motion to amend.
Second.
We have a, motion to amend. Excuse me.
Motion to amend. Bill 120.
And the amendment is in front of members. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we need a motion to hold the amended bill for one week.
Motion to hold. The amended bill 120 for one week.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held again for one week. Thank you. That moves us on to the invoices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. We do have P-cards before us.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That will move us on to the Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor. Bill 70.
Bill 70. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into a Financial and In Kind Sponsorship Agreement for the City's Office of Special Events 2020 Season.
Motion to table.
Second.
Roll call vote? This is Bill 70 under Public Safety Services Committee on Bill Page Six.
Page Six, Bill Number 70.
I don't, I don't have any information while we're, while we're...
Sorry, it was a request from the Public Safety Director.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Pecos, Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Cal Smith, Ms. Strasburger?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Bill is tabled. We will now move on to Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Bill 118?
Bill 118, resolution granting Jeff Yates, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new 10-inch concrete sidewalk along South Fourth, five existing loading docks, as well as a new ADA ramp at 317 East Carson Street in the 17th Ward, 3rd Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Session? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Bill passes. Bill 119?
Bill 119, resolution granting of the PNC Bank Squirrel Hill. Their successors unassign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an ADA entrance ramp at 5810 Forbes Avenue, 14th Ward, 5th Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Session? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Mr. Wilson. We have one new paper.
Bill 147, resolution authorizing the city to enter into a preservation agreement with the New Hazlet Theater.
Motion to approve, but for discussion?
Second.
Thank you for letting this go, or have an opportunity to go to next, next week. The reason for this, that we did the rule of eight, was so that the New Hazlet Theater is going to restore the granite, the old granite steps that, that exist. They're going to go for a Keystone Preservation Grant, I'm sorry, Historic Preservation Grant. And to be within the timeline of applying for this grant. The, and also the state wanted the, the New Hazlet Theater to go and actually make sure that the city was okay with this because they own the property, or we own the property. So they have a lease agreement with the city, and so they appreciate this, you know, like a better timeline that we're going on here. And so thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
I'm sorry, I can't really tell from my standing committee packet, who's going to own the easement?
The City of Pittsburgh will own everything.
Okay, so it's, so it's a preservation easement. So they are putting an easement on the deed. So the City of Pittsburgh is putting the easement on the deed?
I don't know the full bill in front of me.
Sorry?
Uh, the City of Pittsburgh, yeah, so the, basically the City of Pittsburgh has.
Sounds like the theater is going to own. Maybe it's not an easement, it just says preservation agreement.
I don't think, so basically all this is, is to, so the New Hazlet Theater worked with the Law Department, and they, you know, worked with them on ensuring, basically the, the state actually wanted, before they actually would give the hundred grand, you know, be up for, you know, actually be able to accept the hundred thousand dollars. They wanted to ensure that the city was in agreement with the, the, the construction that would, that would take place on the property. And so this will bring it up to ADA compliant. Maybe like a new ADA. Right now they have a ramp on the side. They're gonna, the new construction would bring it to a more modern and actually bring it back to its original historic siding that it once had. So looking to preserve that part of it. But really, the state wanted to see that the city was in agreement before we actually, before they moved forward with actually granting.
Okay, I think I'm following you. So I'm supportive and I'm excited about the project. So if I kind of figure it out later and have any other questions, I'll just ask you before Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, they're very nice big granite steps, and right now they're falling in. And so they're, they're taking the steps to really remediate that and make it so that people can enjoy the theater for a lot longer than. I mean, it was really great what they did, you know, some time ago where the, the New Hazlet Theater staff and board got together and really made that place, you know, something that, there's plays and musicals and things that happen there. And I'm sure maybe you've been there. My parents grew up, you know, growing up on the North Side, they went there all the time. And so it's, it's really great to see what they've been doing. And so really what they're trying to do is just continue to make sure that people have, make sure it's accessible to people. So these, they took me on a tour and showed me these steps, and it's really incredible.
Glad. I'm just, I'll, I'll ask if I, again, I'm interested in how the agreement works, so if I follow, I can follow up with you anytime.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 2031?
Bill 2031, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title 9 Zoning Article 1, Section 90203 zoning map by changing from EMI Educational Medical Institution to UI Urban Industrial Property with frontage on Jane Street, 20th Street, 21st, Mary Street, Edwards Way, and Harkam Way in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, 17th Ward.
Motion to approve. Second.
Session? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 2307?
Bill 2307, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Joseph J. Weiss Jr. Federal Courthouse located at 700 Grant Street in downtown 2nd Ward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 2307 is approved. Bill 29?
Question for you. We're in 2307, we're at the historical stuff?
Yes.
Or any, I didn't look, or any of these, does the, does the owner objects to any of these, or all these are by owner approval?
I was, I was chairing the historic review public hearing, and I understood from Sarah Quinn that none of the owners are opposed to any of these, for all four of these.
Okay, that's my only question. You can read them together.
Bill 29, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Bradbury located at 1130 Redore Street in the Central North Side Neighborhood, 22nd Ward. Bill number 30, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the City-County building at 414 Grant Street, 1st Ward. Bill number 31, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Pennsylvania National Bank at 3480 Butler Street in the Lawrence Field Neighborhood, 6th Ward.
Motion to approve. Second.
Session?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
So I just, I'm, I'm going to approve these. Bobby, you're new in council, and so you haven't probably heard me talk about this before. But I am, I am, I am usually against designating historical structures against the owner's wishes. I think our system is broken. I think it's unfair for someone to be able to simply walk down the street, see a house, nominate it, get it approved without, without the owner's participation, and then force the owner to have all of these regulatory restrictions placed on their house by someone who doesn't pay the mortgage, who's not attached to them. They didn't, but when they bought their house, those restrictions weren't on them. I just, I think it's wrong. What I think, and I, again, every time it comes up, it reminds me, I tried to do this before, I'll probably start again. I think what's fair is this. I think what I think is fair. I think there are structures that are historic in the city of Pittsburgh, I mean, many of them, obviously. I think if the owner, if you, if you want to designate my house as historic, and my house is historic, right? My house is built in the 1800s, you better not nominate it, but you, you know, it's, it's historic, right? I think what's fair is, and if the city says this house is important to the city's legacy, right? I believe there should be a process where we can nominate because it's so important to the city. But at the same time, since you're going to rob me of my property rights, you should be obligated to sell it to me, to sell, to buy it at fair market value. So that if you, if it's so historic that you're going to rob me of my rights, then you should compensate me, or at least give me the opportunity to say, well, I don't, I don't want you to nominate it, but since you're going to do it anyway, then you can have it, because I want, and I, I think that's fair. There are other cities that have done that, and so I will continue to have this conversation. I'll probably go back to draft legislation to do that. I think that's fair. I think that so that the city should not just, you know, say, okay, yeah, it's, it's historical. We should have skin in the game. If we're going to nominate and force an owner to accept our registrat, our restrictions, then the city should also be willing to buy it for the public good. So anyway, that's, that's what I think.
Well, thank you for your comment.
I'm done.
Councilman Strasburger at the floor next, sorry.
Oh, I'll, I'll defer to the, the chair of this committee, and then I'll, I'll go next.
All right, well, thank you for hosting the, you know, running, running those, the public hearing, Councilwoman. I had an emergency I had to attend to, so I really appreciate that. So I did have the opportunity, so unfortunately, these, these properties
Yeah, yeah.
are more in line with
Yeah.
Let me think, I think they're separate from what you're
Yes.
mostly trying to get to. And so we have two, 29 and 30. One is the owner, and then I guess the 30 is the de facto owner currently. So Mr. Gaddy is the, the owner at Reed Arst for the Bradbury, and he's, he's the sponsor on that one, and then also the mayor and county executive are the sponsors for this property. And I also had the opportunity to meet with Matt Falcone and speak with him. On the other two, the federal courthouse and then also the national bank.
Supportive.
And there was, there was supportive, yeah. So, so I did have that opportunity to go through that process, so I appreciate your comment. And, you know, in this situation, everyone is on board for this.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Sarah Quinn and all, and everything that she does. The public hearing was informative, and there's a packet that every council member has access to if they'd like to see it. Particular interest to me was the City-County building, but also some of the artwork and some of the historical aspects of the federal courthouse. Just really fascinating stuff if, if you're interested in, in history, especially these institutional buildings downtown. Thank you for what you do.
Councilwoman Gross, then Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, I'll just chime in. I literally came, I had a conflict, schedule conflict, but I came to the hearing to get my hard packet. Thank you, Sarah. And, but those packets are also available on Legistar, so I encourage members of the public to, to see them and have, they're in the permanent record, so they'll always be there for the public's availability.
No, I wanted to echo Councilman Burgess's remarks on historic preservation. I couldn't agree more with what he had to say on that. And I think, you know, a hundred years from now, no one really thinks of a hundred years from now, but that may affect somebody who wants to buy that property many, many, many years from now, just by red tape. So I think, but, but I know Councilman Wilson, you've done your due diligence with these properties, and that's, that's all good. And I agree with Reverend Burgess, if the owner's okay with it, it's okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All bills are approved. Last bill of the day is Bill 130?
Bill 130, resolution amending Resolution 12, 2019, providing for an agreement with Cascadia Partners to assist the city in developing plans and studies for the development of a data, data manual for the comprehensive plan and provide for the payment at a cost not to exceed $213,657.
Motion approved. Brief discussion?
Second.
So I had the opportunity to understand more of this bill. Basically, this is an increased allocation from the previous $173,000 to $213,000. And this would need to essentially just continue the work that has been happening. If any others here have any more discussion, I'm sure the director will be happy to come up.
Other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Excuse me. With that, we do have some meeting announcements. Yes.
I'm a bit, sorry. Thank you.
This afternoon, council has a cablecast post-agenda discussion at 1:30 on the paid sick leave act, which I believe is in, goes into effect March 15th, Councilman? All right. Next Tuesday, March 3rd, council will hold a briefing with sessions at 1:00 and 1:30 on PLI code changes. Next Wednesday, March 4th, council will hold a briefing with sessions at 1:30 and 2:15 on energy efficiency upgrades with the city's planning, sustainability, and resilience team. Also, next Thursday, on March 5th, council will hold a cablecast public hearing at 6:00 PM in council chambers on Bills 57 and 91 as they relate to the Parks Trust Fund and the Parks Trust Fund millage rate. Any discussion from members? Councilwoman, President Smith?
I just want to be clear that Councilman Coghill and Councilwoman Gross, you just want the public hearing, you didn't want a...
Thank you for asking, because we only motioned to have the public hearing on our bill alone. I don't recall any council vote that motioned to hold those two bills as one public hearing. So I do recall that we voted kind of one week apart to have a public hearing on Bill 57 with our bill? I forget which, what's the number?
So we motion, sorry, so we motioned to hold a public hearing on your bill around the trust fund. The other bill, which increases the millage, requires us to hold a public hearing as well?
It is true, and I believe Madam President is in charge of hearings.
So I wonder, should we, could we schedule them both at the same time? Are you okay with that?
That's what we did.
I just want to make sure you're okay with that. Okay.
Asked for.
And then the post-agenda you also were talking about, so I didn't know if you were still having a post-agenda on your bills, or could we just wait until we have a final draft? Because I'm scheduling a meeting with Reverend Burgess, Councilman Coghill, and the mayor's office until we, and then bringing things back to council members. Councilwoman Gross will include you in some of those too. And so I don't know if you want to have a post-agenda on the final plan that we come up with, is what I think we should do, instead of having all these post-agendas ahead of time.
Oh, I agree that I think we do need a post-agenda. I don't know when we'll be ready for that discussion. So we can motion for it today, but I don't think we're ready to have that scheduled.
But it's not going to be specifically to just the plan that you had introduced, right? Okay, I just want to be clear, because we had talked about it, but we didn't call for the motions, I want to make sure.
So again, I'm, I'm open to whatever members want to do, but I wanted to suggest that, I didn't say anything yesterday, but I have done what you've asked me to do. I, I wrote and gave to all members of council a bill that took in what council asked, members of council asked me, and the mayor asked me into one bill. All members have it. I sent it by email, I sent it by, 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 I gave it out, a council. I gave it in an office mail, I gave it to everybody, and said, give me back feedback. And once I get feedback, then we'll go and have a, and the reason I didn't schedule anything else is I never got any feedback. No one ever said, we didn't like it, we wanted it, we didn't like it. So I didn't do anything because there was nothing to do until someone said to me to move forward.
Madam President's asking you to have those conversations now.
I'm, I'm not unwilling to have them, I'm simply saying that I did not not have them, I didn't, I didn't, I never, I was not against having them. I gave out, I emailed it, I mean, I, I don't know. And no, no, I'm not against, I'm not against, I'm not against going to the mayor's office, I'm not against having conversations.
But then, so
I'm simply saying that I have been waiting.
You're supportive.
I, yeah, I've been waiting to have the conversation. That's all. I'm simply saying that I did what I, yesterday.
But we all already know, so Madam President
She said yesterday.
Conversations coming up.
She said yesterday I didn't do what she said, and I just want to be clear, that I did exactly what she asked me to do, and waited.
No, no, so I'm going to, I have to respond.
This, I thought I did what she wanted me to do.
That's what I'm going to respond to.
You done, Councilman?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yeah, so I just want to say, I think you did what you thought I wanted you to do, but what I wanted to do is to have a conversation with the two of you together, not one of you telling the other to give you, to take the lead, but to work together in a collaborative way for our residents. Look, I hate this, this plan, I think, more than anybody at this table, or maybe is, is equal to some of the people at the table. But I, I feel like the voters voted for it, so now we have to do whatever we have to do to put our egos aside and do what they want us to do and what they expect us to do. Whether I like it or not, we all have to swallow our pride a little bit and do what's best, or do what we're required to do from our voters. And so I think that means And so I think that means everybody's got to put their ego aside and let's work together, let's roll up our sleeves and work together. And that, that means that, you know, somebody takes the lead together, instead of somebody, one person taking, that, that's what it means. Sometimes we're just going to do what we have to, and we definitely see things differently. I mean, you, it was very clear yesterday that there are two very different ways people are viewing this, and, but I think that even so, we've come together on much more difficult situations. This council can work together when we want to, so I'm just saying, we're going to work together, I'm scheduling the meetings, my office is already working on it, but I, what I wanted to know now is, are we going to have that discussion? It's, it's a discussion, it's not just sending stuff to you, it's not just sending stuff to Councilman Coghill, it's having those discussions and putting everything together so that we can, um, at least live with it, and so.
Councilman Coghill?
So here's the way I envisioned it, that we were starting from scratch, right, and getting everybody's opinions, and I got a lot of opinions already, and I look forward